Leading to order, we'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Ross and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Benton.
Please join in with me if you care to. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive them the trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. First item on your agenda for this evening is the consent agenda. If I could have the floor computer, please. Thank you. Your consent agenda this evening includes 14 items, which are as follows, actually 13. The first is the approval of your board minutes for May 24th. Second is the event permit authorization for this Saturday's upcoming Stars and Stripes Spectacular. More on that later. Next is acceptance of a Bridges Grant Program Award for July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017. That's from the Department of Social Services. It's $177,100 in temporary assistance to needy families, and this has no local match. Next is approval of a contract renewal with telephone answering service doing business as Hildrop Taxicab for transportation services to the Department of Social Services. This is paid for through the Virginia Initiative, or paid to provide services for clients in the Virginia Initiative for Employment Not Welfare, and it's funded 50 percent with federal money, 34.5 percent with state money, and only 15.5 percent with local money from here in Spotsylvania. Next item is approval of a contract with Tri-State Utilities Company for Waverly Village Sewer Pipeline Rehabilitation. The contract's in the amount of $486,028, which was the bid of the lowest bidder found responsible. There were seven bids, and the bid we're accepting is less than half of the high bid price. Item seven is approval of a contract renewal with Univar USA for wastewater treatment chemicals. That's a routine renewal. Item eight is approval of a purchase order. This is also a renewal to Worldview Solutions for our GPS and GIS configuration and deployment for our utilities department. That's in the amount of $133,366.19, and this is the fourth year, fourth of nine renewals. Next is the appointment of Nikki Dickinson as a FOIA officer for Spotsylvania County. This is pursuant to amendment to the Virginia Code that requires us to designate and publicly identify our FOIA officers as contact points for our citizens. Ms. Dickinson, who is administrative assistant in my office, is central to our system of responding to FOIAs, and she is the staff best positioned to take on this role. Note that our constitutional officers will also be designating FOIA officers within their offices. Next is request for grant application for the federal fiscal year 2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. It's a local solicitation. There is no local match. This is applying for a grant in the amount of $32,746. Roughly $26,000 of this would fund a apparatus for law enforcement, a robot that would be able to go into dangerous situations where it's best not to send humans, and $6,000 for educational outreach regarding elder abuse and frauds and scams. Next is a MOU for regional tourism partnership. This involves Spotsylvania, Stafford, and Fredericksburg. Each locality contributes $171,000, and this is actually a renewal of a MOU that has existed for quite a number of years. This will renew that relationship for, if I recall correctly, the next three years. Next is a policy amendment related to sign pickups. This is for the collection of illegal signs from alongside our roadways and other places that they tend to clutter, and this amendment will add our utilities department staff to those who are officially authorized and therefore enabled by you to pick up illegal signs found in the field. This will add well to that effort. Next is a resolution to commit fund balances that updates categories in line with the governmental accounting standards, board classifications. This is a routine reconciliation of our accounts with the standard form that we're required to use for our consolidated annual financial report. This is a standard resolution we do every year to line up our CAFR with national standards. And finally, is your approval of a surety form letter for erosion ordinance mandated ENS bonds, and this facilitates our tracking and our auditing. But the staff is recommending your approval of the standard form escrow agreement letter that has been worked up and been approved by the county attorney, and that is your consent agenda.
Do any board members wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
No discussion, let's vote.
Six yes, with Mr. McLaughlin not present.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on your agenda is public presentations. Amy, do we have anyone signed up for public presentations?
No, sir.
Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak at this time? If not, we'll close public presentations.
That takes us, then, Mr. Vice Chairman, to board reports.
Mr. Skinner? Mr. Jakubowski? Mr. Sebula?
No report.
Mr. Ross?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Benton? Mr. Skinner, you're up again. Chair wishes to, or Vice Chair wishes to raise attention to one item. We are potentially being subjected to yet another mandate, this time from the federal government. The states which border the Chesapeake Bay agreed in 2014 to develop a plan for restoration of the bay to be completed by 2018. However, the Environmental Protection Agency is considering stepping in and requiring local area targets for pollutants which would be mandatory on us and bypass the process which has been set up by Virginia, Maryland, Pennsylvania, West Virginia, Delaware, and New York, and the District of Columbia. The State Department of Environmental Quality is opposed to it, but I wanted to let everyone know that this is a potential new mandate, which will be placed on us as far as water quality after we've just gone through an earlier one where we kind of dodged a bullet, but we may not dodge this one. And that's all I had for my board report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the proffer guidelines resolution coming back for action by the board, and here is our planning director, Wanda Parrish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The proffer guidelines were discussed at the June 14 meeting and continued to this meeting. I just have a very brief overview for you. As you know, the Code of Virginia is changing effective July 1 as related to proffers for residential rezonings. Some of the key provisions that are applicable to the discussion this evening are that the county may not request, suggest, or accept an unreasonable proffer, nor deny a rezoning based in whole or part on an applicant's failure to offer an unreasonable proffer. The legislation includes details related to what constitutes a reasonable proffer or an unreasonable proffer, and there is a term called specifically attributable, and any proffer that the county accepts needs to be specifically attributable to the proposed new development. The legislation defines off-site proffers and onsite proffers. Off-site proffers include cash, so any cash proffered by a developer is considered off-site, and that one has the more rigorous test associated with it. We need to prove that there does not exist capacity in the public facility at question, and that the new development will benefit from a capital improvement that the cash is proffered towards. So the key provisions that this evening are that not request, suggest, or accept an unreasonable proffer, and then the idea that any proffer needs to be specifically attributable to the proposed new development are really the key concepts. Our current proffer guidelines, which were last updated in October of 2015, they're based on averages. They're based on the concept that every residential rezoning contributes a proportionate share towards public facility needs, so it's not specifically attributable. It doesn't meet that test. The Code of Virginia has also limited the public facilities that can receive proffers. Our current proffer guidelines include schools, transportation, parks, public safety, general government, libraries, and solid waste. The last three items are no longer permissible in the Code of Virginia, so it's just schools, transportation, parks, and public safety. So staff is recommending that the board adopt the resolution that results in the current proffer guidelines being null and void for rezoning applications that are filed on July 1 or after. The guidelines do not meet that specifically attributable test, and just by their nature, having proffer guidelines, they are a suggestion of what might be an appropriate mitigation for impacts on county facilities. So the proffer guidelines would remain in effect for any rezoning applications filed prior to July 1, or for any proffer amendments that come forth that are not significant changes to a rezoning that had previously been approved. At the June 14 meeting, the board continued this item to this meeting so that we could reach out to Senator Stewart, who had offered to present this to the Attorney General for an opinion. That was done the very next day, but to date, we have not heard back. So that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanda, a couple things is, what you just said here was specific to the rezoning, okay? Why can't we keep our proffers the way they are and then make them specific to that rezoning to that district? I mean, it seems to me that we had some proffers that were put together by citizens, developers, county government, and we all felt that they were reasonable. So my question is, and as we go back to your slides here real quick, specifically attributable. So where you say we got the average now, why can't we keep what we got, but then look at those four areas specifically to that rezoning in that area?
Well, it's staff and the county attorney's opinion that our proffer guidelines are too generic. They're general. They're based on countywide averages. They're based on costs that are not specific to Spotsylvania County at this point in time. So we will probably pull out elements of the proffer guidelines as we evaluate rezonings in the future. There are inputs that are still valid. Some of the mathematical formulas are still valid, but we feel that, as a whole, they do not meet the test of specifically attributable. And more so, I think, is the concern about just simply having proffer guidelines could be considered a suggestion for a proffer.
Just say no. Thank you.
Mr. Jakubowski?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I wouldn't expect our Attorney General to take his time to deal with this. He's Supreme Court wasting taxpayer money defending our governor's unconstitutional blanket restoration of felon voting rights, so I wouldn't hold a breath thinking that he's actually going to take the time to, you know, deal with what he should be dealing with. When it comes to this, I think it's something that our citizens really need to know, is that by getting rid of the proffer guidelines doesn't mean that we're saying we don't accept proffers, nor do we want proffers. What we are saying is to make sure that we are removing the guidelines, is it's removing the ability or a portion of a potential lawsuit, because it might be suggested that we want these numbers. And so by us removing that, we're not asking for no proffers, we're simply saying that these proffers don't line up with what the new law is, the guidelines, that is. So I think those out there who are concerned about our actions need to understand that our actions are not taken simply because we want to do away with proffers, but to line up with what the new state law is. Thanks.
Any other comments? Mr. Ross?
Motion to approve.
I understand what you just presented, but my question is, so what we're doing tonight by approving this is we're getting rid of the old proffers, and we're going to start building a new proffer system, or exactly, and what are we looking forward to the next few months? After July 1, a person comes in for a new rezoning application.
Yes.
So how long until we can work with them, or somebody comes in? We have no proffers whatsoever. Is that correct?
We do not have an adopted proffer guideline, but we do have tools that we can use to evaluate impacts. So we can look at the number of units, the persons per household, the students per household, look at our current capacities, look at our level of service, and look at the costs of projects that are projected in our CIP. So there's a lot of data out there that we can pull from in order to develop a formula and look at the impact of a development on each of these public facilities. But it's going to take, we're going to be working on this. It's going to be a work in progress. We're going to be learning as we go, so I can't say that by, you know, September or by December, we're going to have a new proffer guideline in place or recommended, but we're going to be working towards that, developing something that, a policy, a guideline, something that provides some guidance to the development community, allows the planning commission and board to understand what methodology we're using. So that's our goal, but I can't, we're going to have to work through this before we can figure out exactly what that's going to look like.
I do know it's a work in progress, but my concern is, how do we make it fair for all the applicants that come through the next six months, let's say? How do we actually start, and how do we, you know, because my concern is that when we have that first rezoning application and we get through it, have we set a precedence as far as what we accept, what we don't accept, and?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think so, because this Code of Virginia section now requires that we look at each rezoning individually. So everyone is going to be different. The impacts of everyone are going to be different, and therefore, what might be an acceptable proffer that the county can accept is going to be different.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion on the floor from Mr. Ross, which would declare the current proffer guidelines null and void as of July 1, and Mr. Sebula wanted to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would, I want to be very clear to the public on what we are doing here. This board has been accused since I've been on it as being a board that is not getting proffers for development and rezonings, et cetera. And by doing away with these proffer guidelines, we are complying with state law that requires us to do away with them. It's not because the board wants to do away with them. We are merely being in compliance with the existing law that's effective 1 July. So I just want to make that clear, because we just get bad press all the time, and I don't want to get bad press force on this. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, sir. One more, Wanda. By right, this has, you know, when you talk about by right development now, is, you know, by right, we didn't have much effects on proffers anyway, correct?
Correct.
So this is not affecting the by rights whatsoever, and it'll be remaining the same.
Correct. This purely applies to rezonings that include a residential component.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Call a question.
Seven yes.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, our treasurer, Larry Pritchett, is here to interact with the board. The request had been for a discussion of tax due dates, billing dates, and the possibilities for adjusting our calendar, or adjusting to more frequent or a different schedule of payments for our citizens.
Good evening. Should have in front of you a response we sent with the executive summary, along with two attachments. Currently, the state code only allows to bill twice a year. In order to bill four times or more than twice, it would take a change in the state code. Currently, I don't feel like there is a cash flow issue. We have sufficient funds that are invested, and it may get low at times, but we can always go back to the investments, because we've got them staggered where they come material, and they're available at different times during the year when the funds are needed. In one of the attachments, there are several options. I will do a real brief summary of on each one of them. Option one was moving the tax due dates from June to September for the first half, and from December to March for the second half. The main issue with this is that you would be moving the first half of collections out of a fiscal year, which would really hit your fund balance that first particular year, because it could be as much as $50,000 that, I mean, $50 million that you would not have in your account at the end of June 30, because your due date would be moved back further. Option two is moving June to March and December to September. The issue with this is a timing factor that works with the budget. Currently, you're adopting the tax rate like mid-April. If you went to this route, you would have to be adopting it like end of January, and this would really affect the commissioner's office and the treasurer's office as far as being able to generate the tax bills. Option three, leaving the due date for the first half as is, and moving the second half due date up to get it away from the holidays. The issue I could see here is that you've shortened that window now for the taxpayer, that they did have six months to pay their bill, and now it's closing it into three months. The one option that I think we probably need to concentrate on is option four, and that is the many different ways that people have to pay that tax bill. We currently have got a system through the Internet where if they go on, they can register, they can schedule payments, they can set up auto payments, they can make monthly payments. So when it comes to the December 5 due date, they could schedule their payments and not have that one large payment that they could make in December. The other one, which I don't think would be very favorable to the taxpayer, personal property, you could move it from two due dates to one due date, which you could make it all on June 5, but again, you're asking the taxpayer to pay one full year at one time. I don't think that would be real favorable for the taxpayer. Administratively wise, it would really affect my staff. Financially, we are estimating it could be additional cost of about $300,000 when you take in additional staff that would be needed, the additional postage, the additional printing of bills, you know, it could, it's an expense that I would like to see us try to avoid. And, you know, it's just finding a reasonable way to make this change is very difficult to do, and at this time, I wouldn't recommend making a change from the two due dates that we currently have. Also, too, in our collection process, currently, you've got six months in between the two due dates. By state code, we're required to send out a notice, give the taxpayer 30 days after the due date. So you take December 5, we would send a notice out early January. We would do collections beginning in February, and if you were doing a billing four times a year, you could be right on top of the next notice coming out, so the taxpayers could be really confused as to, we're coming after them for a past due amount, but yet they're just getting a current bill in the mail. So administratively wise, it would be a major impact on our staff, and it may even affect the collections and potentially make delinquency collections go up. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Sebula?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one that's a little bit confusing to me, Mr. Pritchett, and that is, if we were going to, an individual was going to spread the personal property tax over a 12-month period, this is an area that you're going to have more potential for buying and selling vehicles that could affect the 12-month payment, if you will. How would you suggest that that be adjusted?
I don't see that really being an issue, because we currently prorate vehicles, and as they buy and sell, the commissioner's office does make a change. The new vehicle is on a supplement bill, so it would be on a separate bill at that time. But, you know, it would, with the supplement bills, end with irregular bills, and then you throw in two more billings, it really could be confusing to the taxpayer as to what amount do they owe, because you'll be adjusting quite often.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. -- excuse me. What about, how do we let people know what their options are? I mean, because there's a lot of people that probably don't know everything's going to, is there a chance that during one of these billings that we give them a notice, some type of notice, that, you know, if you want to pay ahead, you can do it this way, you can do it that way? You know, to be honest, I've had nobody call me about any of the tax billing problems or anything of that nature whatsoever. But then again, I probably couldn't tell them exactly what options they have and exactly what to do. So would that cost us much to go ahead and, if we decide to keep it the way it is, but to inform the citizens more of what their options are as far as paying this tax bill, every option they have?
Currently, the options are listed on the back of the tax bill. We may need to come up with an insert that explains a little bit more that you can pay it monthly. It just tells them the option to pay online is there, that's on the back of the bill. But maybe we need to do a better sell job about it, you know, you can pay it monthly. We can probably put this on a website. Two of the last three billings, we have had an insert in that makes them aware that we have this Internet service where you can have this Internet service where you can pay it online. Maybe we can add to that insert that you can pay monthly if you would like. Because when that bill and that book is once generated, the, you know, like in April and May, right after the tax rate is set, we can accept payments anytime, you know, after that.
I was going to say, the only thing that would confuse me is what you just said. You could make a monthly payment. I don't want people to think that when you get your bill in June, that you can go.
Oh, true.
So we have to clarify that, that as soon as you pay the June bill, let's just say we start this, then you should start thinking about the December bill by paying monthly payments into that bill. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, they would, the half of it would still have to be due on the June 5, and the balance would need to be due for the second half on December 5. You've got a very good point there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I was going to bring one thing up. You know, I think this discussion came up during the budget hearings, and the question was really about whether or not we had enough cash flow in between the periods. But what you said earlier is that generally, we haven't had a problem with cash flow, and I think that was the reason, let's go into four potential periods, so we don't have that big dip in cash flow. But if that's not the issue, then maybe we shouldn't try to fix something.
Yeah, currently, the cash flow has not been an issue. We had sufficient funds. If we get low, we've got sufficient funds, investments that we can pull out.
Mr. Ross?
Mr. Chair, some time ago, I was approached by some constituents that basically said the time that we collect these taxes are the worst time, time where families take summer vacations and Christmas time where people are trying to buy a lot of presents. So I think, from my viewpoint, if we could move it, it'd be better, but none of these options really seem like they're feasible. I did have a question on option three, and that's when you're moving the December bill up to September. Would that bill be for the entire six months, or would it only be from the June bill to September?
It would be for the six months.
And we can do that? So we could bill, have a bill required before the time period elapses for which it's being billed for?
Yes, because you could move it up, and all of it be paid in June. So there are localities that do that. So yes, that's an option.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good option either.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Sebula.
So if I understand correctly, the options that you went through, option four is leaving things as they are?
That's correct.
And providing the taxpayers with other payment options?
That's correct. And we probably need to try to somehow advertise and get that word out whether they have that option.
That being the case, I would make a motion to accept option four.
I don't think we need a motion because that's the status quo. That's okay. We just leave it as is?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay to withdraw?
Okay to withdraw. That's what we need to do.
Okay, we'll just, status quo? No other issues? Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that brings us to our closed session. It's scheduled, before we go to closed session, if I may, I would just like to remind the public briefly that Saturday is our Stars and Stripes Spectacular from 3 to 8 here at Spotsylvania Courthouse. We are currently seeing reasonable weather forecast for Saturday, but if there is a need for a rain date, that will be Sunday, the 3rd of July. Also, I want to let citizens know that the Spotsylvania County's 2017, FY17 adopted budget is now available for viewing online. Also, I want to let citizens know that on July 8, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. right here in the Holbert Building parking lot, will be the DMV-to-go mobile unit. If you haven't experienced this and you have need for business with the DMV, it is a great way to avoid standing in line. The line here at the courthouse is much shorter when their mobile unit is here. The services here are necessarily limited, but you can learn about those online. You can make basic renewals and transact basic business with your DMV, and they will be right here at Spotsylvania Courthouse, July 8, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00. And it's time for your closed session.
This will be your closed session resolution. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, specifically the position of the county attorney. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A1, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
You have motion? Call a question.
Seven, yes.
Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion to convene into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Sebula?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Mr. Ross has a statement?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have a statement. As most of, but not all of my constituents and friends know, on February 26 of this year, I was served papers falsely accusing me of assault and battery at a Spotsylvania County Republican Committee meeting on February 25, attended by 42 people. This was truly a made-up charge for what I assume was made for political reasons. After a somewhat lengthy trial a week ago today, June 21, one of my daughter's 13th birthdays, the judge dismissed the case. I would like to thank my wife and children for standing by me while stories in the paper ran and friends asked them about their husband or dad. I would like to thank the countless people who called me to offer to testify on my behalf and to offer prayers for me. I would like to thank my employer in my daytime job for standing by me and helping me with the administration of maintaining my security clearance during the time between the false accusation and the trial. I would like to thank the people who took a day off from work to encourage me and/or testify last Tuesday on my behalf. Greg Benton, Kirk Twig, Al King, Mary Jane King, Mary Lou Collier, Nancy Cole, Leroy Schgilscoffer, Bill Nightingale, Mary Walsh, Liz Thurber, Jim Thurber, Michael Smith, Gene Hope, and again, my wife Jennifer, whose birthday is tonight. Happy birthday, sweetheart. I want to thank my attorney, Mark Gardner, for bringing out the truth in the trial. Mark, you are a class act, and in my opinion, give the word lawyer a good name, something hard to do in any day or age. I would like to thank Chris Yakubowski for his honest and truthful testimony. Chris, I know there are several things we have disagreed with in the past, but I am grateful for your honest testimony this past Tuesday where you shared that your view of the alleged incident was blocked by other people in your way. Thank you. I would also like to thank Jason Clark, a Culpeper deputy, who was also called by the prosecution and recalled the event exactly as I recalled it, that I did not touch my accuser. I want to thank my constituents for your continued support. I would also like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for carrying me through yet another trial, this time a literal one. I'm here to continue to represent my constituents and only you. I hope everyone enjoys the upcoming 4th of July and that we each celebrate the liberty and freedoms we have here in America. I know I will be. Truly, they are something to cherish and celebrate. May God bless you all. Thank you. And with that, a motion to adjourn.
Call a question.